2018, 10:00 AM, Fisher's Courtroom, County Administration Building, Texas Avenue 306. First item on the Gents Indication Place Legion to US Texas Flag, Commissioner Calhoun.
Our heavenly Father, we pause by for the many blessings which you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you be with us here this morning and, dear Lord, as you guide us, we make decisions that affect the residents of Brazos County. We ask you to please be with all of our military and families here and worldwide and all of our first responders and in some way maybe bring the world back to the justice that we know it is. In large name we pray, amen.
Amen. Praise the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Arm the Texas flag, declare the nation the Texas one nation under God, one and universal.
Second item on the Gents Conference Systems Input and Our Concerns. Isaac, I was happy to see that you came in and sat on that side of the room. I was afraid that this whole building... Number three is presentation and discussions. Presentation results of the FY 2017 Economic Impact Analysis for Brazos County Exposition. Tom, are you up first?
Judge and Commissioners, the presentation this morning provides results of the Fifth Annual Economic Impact Study completed for the Brazos County Expo Complex. Specifically, it covers FY 2017, October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017, our 10th year of actual operation, which is hard to believe. The expo officially opened in October 2007. Therefore, we still remain very young in the event facility industry compared to our regional and state competitors. Since the expo is in a continued growth pattern now and will be in the future, the economic impact annually should continue to grow significantly. Therefore, a new economic impact study should be done each fiscal year moving forward. As many are aware, the expo exists primarily to bring visitors into Brazos County to bolster spending at our local hotels, businesses, and attractions. As such, our staff has continued to make management decisions to significantly grow the number of people we bring into the county. It's also important for us to keep in mind that a second part of our mission is to meet the event facility needs for the citizens of Brazos County. The FY 2017 study has shown that spending per person per day was down somewhat. Needless to say, we can't control what people spend when they visit Bryan-Collison. However, management is routinely adjusting our strategies towards booking more events that generate higher spending. In FY 2017, we hosted more people for horse shows and conferences, which have higher spending patterns, and fewer people at livestock shows and miscellaneous spectator events that generate less spending. We also hosted fewer private events, which, as discussed in the past, generates minimal spending. With a focus on expo facility expansion, we have been able to attract larger events that keep people in town more days and more nights. With constant management evaluation, we are moving toward redirecting the majority of our event and event days toward events originating from outside Brazos County that attract more spending. This redirection is part of the reason why the expo's economic contribution, based on both current FY 2017 reported spending and our three-year average spending, was actually up over FY 2016 despite the lower spending trends. The principal investigator, Dr. Rebecca Dudenzine, which most of you know, is an associate professor and extension economist, community economic development at Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service. After the presentation, Dr. Dudenzine will answer any questions from members of the court and then we'll move outside, as we usually do, to the atrium for any remaining questions. And as I'm introducing her and calling her up, I've got a handout that I'd like to give each one of you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm going to go ahead and just launch right in. I'm a bit shorter, so let's sit down here. As Tom mentioned, there were a lot more person days this year. There were 164 events, including the Brazos County Fair and Expo, 163 excluding the fair, and 344 days with the fair, three more if we include the fair. There's about 16,000 people at the fair, and so the 86,000 people who attended events at the expo, if you take out the fair, because that's a lot of local people, there are some people who are coming in, but in the past we've not included the expo, we're looking at about 70,000 people. But what we're really interested in is how long they stay here and how long they spend money. And so, again, that total without the fair, 156,000 person days, which is up from last year, about 148,000, so up pretty significantly there. Again, we do not include the Brazos Fair and Expo in these numbers. This also doesn't include the Hurricane Harvey relief. There were three events that were canceled by the organizers, not by the expo, due to the hurricane, so there were 167 scheduled events this year. But at the same time that those events had canceled, the expo had animals out there in their relief efforts, as well as serving as a staging area for several National Guards and other relief groups. That's not included here, and those people were here from other areas, spending money and obviously doing important community service as well. What we want to talk about today is the growth, both in the person days and the spending that was happening out at the expo center, and also looking a little more at that reallocation that Tom mentioned towards events to bring in more spending while people are here in the county. So I'm going to cut right to the chase. We usually like to look at that three-year average spending because not every event can be surveyed every year, and so by using the three-year average, we have a broader range of events, so we're not just capturing high spending this year or maybe low spending this year. Looking at that three-year average, we're hoping that average is out. We're also hoping that any fluctuations in the economy are averaged out using that three-year spending, and we're going to come back to that in a little bit. So the three-year average spending, people who are visiting the county, again, we're only looking at visitors, not local residents who live here. Those people who are bringing in new money to the county, about $7.3 million were brought in for these events, generating an economic impact in terms of output or gross sales of about 10.5 million, of which 5.5 million was value-added or contribution to GDP. Labor income was about 3 million, and that's about 100 jobs. If we look just at the 2017 spending, so not that average of 2015 through 2017 spending, which is inflated by the way, up to 2017 dollars, but just what was reported this year in 2017 by survey respondents, that spending was down a little bit at $6.8 million, which generated $10 million, again, about 103 jobs. So, again, though we really want, you know, this three-year average is our focus, the 7.2 in direct spending and the 10.5. So, again, looking at that growth and reallocation, horse shows, last year there were 25,000 person days for horse shows. This year, there were almost 38,000. Horse shows are by far the biggest expenditure group. And then conferences and career fairs were interesting this year because they were up significantly from last year. So, you know, there it just looks like a difference of, you know, 4,500 or so person days. But actually, last year there were 10 conferences and career fairs. This year there were 16, and most of the growth in that was actually conferences, which is great because career fairs, we only really can count those people who are from out of town as a vendor. Most of the people who are attending the career fair are locals. They're either students or local people and looking for a job. So when we're bringing in conferences, almost everybody is from out of town. Not everybody, there are some locals, but it's much more skewed toward out-of-town people and they're spending more. But, again, spending was down in 2017, but still up from 2014. 2014, if you remember, was not a great year in this whole area of the state, and so we were dropping those really low numbers from our averages. Some of you like numbers, some of you don't, and so I promise I'm going to get to the picture slide in a minute. But when we look at that difference, if you take a look at 2014, the total just for horse shows, $94, $95, which was down significantly from 2013, and now we hit 2016, 2017, we're way up from that. 2016 had really high access fees or really high entry fees for some of those horse show events. So it's really about $92 excluding the access fees in 2016, $87 in 2017, still up a little. So we're up, we're losing that 2014, and we're right here at 2017, so we've got a higher average. When we think about the average now of our three years, 2015 to 2017, is $167. It was about 157, 156 before, but when you take that times 38,000 days, that makes a dent. So that's one of the reasons why we see some of those changes. And when we look at it graphically, you can see we're dropping the maroon bar, which is 2014. We've still got pretty low 2015 spending, which I don't think is a surprise to anybody. 2016 just shot up. 2017 is down. 2016 was kind of an anomaly, probably, 2017. Looks like it's pretty well on trend, but basically what happened is we dropped that 2014 average, 2014-16, that blue bar, and now we're with the green bar, which is higher, a little bit higher for horse shows, again, about a $10 difference, a bigger difference for the conferences over fewer days. So as I mentioned, horse shows are the largest category by far in terms of spending and economic output. I always like to highlight some of those big categories, $3.7 million in direct spending and $5.3 million in output. Again, those conferences and career fairs were just so interesting because of that high growth this year. Last year, just for reference, that direct spending was about $421,000, and the total effect was $586,000. So a lot of growth in that area, again, both increased spending and growing those conference numbers, which are large numbers of people who are in the county. We always like to look at this pattern of growth over time, and the expo has consistently been at 10% or more. Last year, more with higher spending. And then 2017, if that doesn't look suspicious to you, I would question that, right? When I look at a number and growth like that, I think if it's my own work, there must be something wrong, and I need to go back and check some formulas. And if I look at somebody else's work, you're going to have to explain that to me. So let me explain that to you. As we mentioned, there was growth in actual person days. There was also a reallocation of spending towards those higher events. So we're using, this is the 2017 event pattern that we're looking at this year, and they've taken days away from private events that had virtually no impact and from livestock shows that had less impact and are putting them towards conference days than in horse show days. So, you know, those are legitimate ways of growth, but we also dropped 2014, and that makes a huge difference. What this slide shows is last year, when I brought you this report, the report said that there was $9.4 million if you looked just at 2016 spending, and then there was a little over $7 million if you averaged it 2014 to 2017. So that's what we're normally looking at, right, is that three-year average. But if we compare the 2015 through 2017 average, what I just showed you, the 10.5 million with last year's spending, you see we're right back on target, right in that 10% to 12% range of growth. So, you know, that's actually legitimate. What we're seeing there with that 38%, part of that is growth that's really happening and part of that is losing that 2014 average. So it'll be interesting to see what spending in FY 2018 brings. But the bottom line is $7.3 million in direct spending this year using that average and $10.5 million and 103 jobs in output. I also went ahead and just threw in there, just based on the direct tax for the hotels and the sales tax at the county and the city, what those numbers look like for you. We haven't always included those, but I went ahead and threw those in there this year. And that's what we've got. Are there any questions?
Do you have any questions?
You've got to good work, Tom.
Great job. Thanks, Deb, and the State's staff. Y'all did a great job out there. Positive comments all the time. And I think recognizing what the economic impact of the expo is a great idea, and glad we started on that a few years ago, and you do a great job, Dr. Dudenzine.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Judith, one comment. I appreciate those comments. And I may wish, when it's all said and done, that I didn't say this, but FY 2018, our current fiscal year, looks like it's going to be awesome. So what you see out there, I think, the year we're in right now, is because we're getting some national events, sometimes those national events that move around geographically, even some states that move around geographically. We're having several of them that are actually after about three years of coming back this year. So I think this will end up, by far, and should be, all right, but by far it should be the best year that we've ever had. So when we're sitting here or we're here next year, we'll do it as a presentation. I think we're going to all be really, going to be really happy with what is happening at the expo, because I think it's going to be awesome.
Always love good news.
I just wanted to say, too, when I was at the events I've been out there for, the people I've met, they, particularly when we're there for the Stock Dogs when they had that, I think if there's anything we can do to help get the community at large to come out and see some of these free events and see what's going out there, I mean, if you've got preschool children that would be interested in going out and seeing some of these things, I mean, grandparents can take the kids or parents can take the kids. It's free, it's interesting, and they get to see what's going on in our community from a global basis. So thank you for what you're doing there. Whatever we can do to help capitalize on that for our local community as well, I think, is outstanding.
Thank you all. We will consider and take action on the J. D. I. 432, number four proclamation, 18 date pass 001, declaring February 11, 2018, as two-one-one day. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number five, suggest take action to relocate vote center 10 Brazos County Admin Building to Brazos County Elections Administration rooting for cloud training.
Motion made secondly discussion.
Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number eight, acceptance of donation of Jackson's Debbie for $30 gift, gift to be used by health and wellness clinics. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number nine, payment authorization to Gall's LLC in the amount of $54.49, a uniform purchase for Constable Precinct Board of Shaw, without a payment advance. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 10, payment authorization to Longhorn International Trucks LTD in the amount of $65.60 for auto parts on a dump truck RB 694 on work order number 3969. Purchase order was closed during, due to fiscal year end. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 11, put the county judge, county auditor, and emergency management coordinator to sign the FY 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, application. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 12, approval of the purchase order for a 2017 Chevrolet Express 2500 work van in the amount of $24,632 for the Brazos County Facilities Services Department, one unit. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 13, approval of the following job descriptions, A is Class Code 1519, position one, detention officer temporary for SO detention, and B, which I'd like to remove from the agenda for today, is Class Code 20, is 021A, transition training, OPT for county judge office. Motion made secondly to approve A, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 14, approval of stop loss for renewal of documents. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 15, approval of contract and suddenly for guest wireless internet services in county buildings. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 16, renewal of bid number 18-0032R, hydrate land with Austin White Land Company. Move approval. Second. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 17, approval of no award, but following request and qualifications are a Q due to no bids or proposals received. Second. Motion made secondly for a no award, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 18 is approval of permission to advertise for RFP 18-097, expansion of juvenile detention center. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 19 is approval of permission to advertise for RFP 18-097, expansion of juvenile detention center. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 20 is approval of following committee for the evaluation of the RFP 18-097, expansion of juvenile detention center. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 21 is renewal of bid 18-112R, janitorial equipment products with Greg Rissworth District. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 22 is permission to advertise the bid number 18-105, Udon Park. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 24 is request permission to enter private property owned by Sammy Catalina on Democrat Road at Navasota River. County will reestablish drainage due to erosion problem created from recent bridge construction sites located in precinct 2. Second. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 24 is request permission to enter private property owned by Sammy Catalina on Democrat Road at Navasota River. County will reestablish drainage due to erosion problem created from recent bridge construction sites located in precinct 2. Second. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 26, approval of bid 18-112R, janitorial equipment products with Greg Rissworth District. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 27, expenditure journal entries, expenditure journal entries, 120153 and 101001 through 101003. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 28 is tax refund applications for the following. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 29 is commissioners' court minutes for the following dates. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 30 is budgeting, budgeting FY 17 slash 18, 16.1 through 16.7. Second. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 31 is personal change stats. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Number 32 is payment claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 800016 through claim number 800348. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 29 is commissioners' court minutes for the following dates. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 32 is personal change stats. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Number 32 is payment claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 800016 through claim number 800348. Motion made secondly discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Number 33 is acknowledgment of acknowledgement of 2017 racial profile report for Brazos County Sheriff's Office. Number 34 is acknowledgment of 2017 racial profile for Brazos County Constable Precinct 3, and number 35 is acknowledgment of 2017 racial profile report for Brazos County Constable Precinct 4. Remove to number 36, assurance of late, uh, report on inmate population 20.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Pico 591, it lasts 24 hours, 506, 10, 85 limit, 54 on ankle monitors, 555.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Number 37 is an ask for the venture status in the possible future of Gents Conference.
If you'll mark your calendars, on February 14, 2018, the Silver-Haired Legislators, that's the Texas Silver-Haired Legislators, which I am a member of, is hosting a town hall meeting. It's for senior citizens, gives them an opportunity to bring their issues to the forefront and hopefully start some discussion of the solutions that there will be. Those issues will be taken to the 17th Texas Silver-Haired Legislature Session at the State Capitol in April 2018, which we know several legislative pieces have been brought and made law, so it's real important that we get the input of our local senior citizens and everything is provided, lunch at no cost to the senior citizens. You are invited, and please spread the word.
Any other announcements? Number 38 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none on the jury. Thank you all. of $65.60 for auto parts on a dump truck, RB 694, on work order number 3969, purchase order was closed during, due to fiscal year end. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 11 is authorization for the county judge, county auditor, and emergency management coordinator to sign the FY 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, application. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 12 is approval of the purchase order for a 2017 Chevrolet Express 2500 work van in the amount of $24,632 for the Brazos County Facilities Services Department, one unit. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 13 is approval of the following job descriptions, A is Class Code 1519, position one, detention officer, temporary for SO detention, and B, which I'd like to remove from the agenda for today, is Class Code 20, is 021A, transition training, all PT for county judge office. Second. Motion made second to approve A, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 14 is approval of stop loss for renewal of documents. Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 15 is approval of contractors suddenly for guest wireless internet services on county buildings. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 16 renewal of bid number 18-0032, R hydrate land with Austin White Land Company. Move approval. Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 17 is approval of no award for following request of qualifications RFQ due to no bids or proposals received. Second. Motion made second for no award, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 18 is award and approval of contract RFP 18-091, Design Bill Services for McAllister Lane Rehabilitation with Howard Baker. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 19 is approval of permission to advertise for RFP 18-097, Expansion of Juvenile Justice Center. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. RFP to go out for a bid.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 20 is approval of the following committee for the evaluation of the RFP 18-097 Expansion of Juvenile Detention Center. Second. Motion made second to approve A through G, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 21 is renewal of contract 18-101R for Culver says follows. Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 22 is permission to advertise the bid number 18-105, United Park. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 23 is renewal of bid 18-112R, janitorial paper products with Greg Risswood District. Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 24 is request permission to enter private property owned by Sammy Catalina on Democrat Road at Navasota River. County will reestablish drainage due to erosion problem created from recent bridge construction sites located precinct two. Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. And I'm assuming you're going to explain one distinction. Motion action. Number 25 is consider and take action on FWP Holdings LLC utility permit to install a temporary 10-inch polyurethane water line along the right way of Harris Lane, a distance of .5 mile, Hudson Road, a distance of 1.9 miles, project provided water to an oil well site located precinct two. Move approval. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 26, consider and take action on Wild Horse Resources Management LLC utility permit to install 10-inch polyurethane water line within and along the right way of Wallen Road, a distance of 1,975 feet, project provided water to an oil well site located precinct four. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 27, expenditure journal entries, expenditure journal entries, 1201, 53, and 1, start that one, 01, 00, 01, through 1, 01, 00, 03. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 28 is tax refund applications for the public. Motion made second to approve A through E, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 29 is commissioners' court minutes for the following dates. Motion made second to approve A through E, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 30 is budget, budget for FY 17 slash 18, 16.1 through 16.7. Second. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 31 is personnel change stats. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 32 is payment claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8, 000016 through claim number 8, 00034. Motion made second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Number 33 is acknowledgement of the 2017 racial profile report for Brazos County Sheriff's Office, 34 is acknowledgement of 2017 racial profile for Brazos County Constable Precinct Three, and number 35 is acknowledgement of 2017 racial profile report for Brazos County Constable Precinct Four. Move to number 36, Sheriff made a four on inmate population, 21.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Pico 591, in the last 24 hours, 506 men, 85 women, 54 on ankle monitors, and five victims.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Number 37 is an ask for the inventory status of possible future agenda topics.
If you'll mark your calendars, on February 14, 2018, the Silver Haired Legislators, that's the Texas Silver Haired Legislators, which I am a member of, is hosting a town hall meeting. It's for senior citizens, gives them an opportunity to bring their issues to the forefront and hopefully start some discussion of the solutions that there will be. Those issues will be taken to the 17th Texas Silver Haired Legislature Session at the State Capitol in April 2018, which we know several legislative pieces have been brought and made law, so it's real important that we get the input of our local senior citizens, and everything is provided, lunch, at no cost to the senior citizens. You are invited, and please spread the word.
Any other announcements? Number 38 is call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, adjourned. Thank you all.